She goes, she gets a spot there. She's so spoiled. It's her every morning. She sits right here, she has her little head out. Drink my coffee.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you all for attending tonight's special meeting of the Department Board of Finance, Thursday, March 5th, 2020. Want to call it a word of the meeting and begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have tonight, as we've had the last few nights, one agenda item, and that is the deliberation of the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. The process to date, just to get folks up to speed, is that we had four nights of department presentations made through a joint Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance meeting. We had one night of Board of Selectmen presentations through the Board of Finance, and that presentation was followed by the beginning night of deliberation for the Board of Finance. Board of Finance then had two nights of deliberation on its own, concluding in tonight's meeting. I want to make clear that tonight, we're gonna go through what we call category three accounts. So we've already cleared all the category one and two accounts, those are the easier accounts. There are thirty-seven accounts in total, and we've got five to go through tonight. But we do kinda put the 450 and 460 accounts together. We have highway, employee benefits, miscellaneous charges and transfers, Board of Ed, op, and maintenance. With any luck, we'll get through it pretty quickly. What's important to remember that is tonight, despite the fact that this board has, I guess, put about thirty hours in so far, it's the conclusion of the preliminary round. That's really the way to think about it. After tonight, we have a public hearing on March 23rd, and that's when the proposal that this board puts together will be commented on by the public. Then, that will be followed by an April 6th annual town meeting. We'll have to decide what to do with the budget. It can come down, it can't go up, but it has to be moved on to a town meeting, and that will be the, excuse me, a town referendum. Right now, I believe it's scheduled for April 21st. So as we've been saying the last few years, remember, this is like a three-round battle for folks to really want, to make sure they get their voices heard. They have to be at all three rounds, and today's just the conclusion of a preliminary. With that, I was hoping perhaps just Bob and/or Brad to remind the board, can you go through the cuts that we've made so far? Brad, you want me to?
So, starting off with professional services account 160, $5,000 was taken out of account 352 legal services. 180 building inspection. We had 5,000 taken out of the building officials 101 account. Data processing, 5,000 was taken out of the 5313 contracted services. Then it was 10,000 taken out of Public Works contracted services. Building maintenance, 5,000 from.
Bob, I'm sorry, hold on.
I just wanna hear the account numbers first, just so I can, instead of just... Could you just say the account numbers first?
230 Public Works, 10,000. 260 building maintenance, 5,000 from contracted services. 270 tree warden, contracted services, $10,000. Register of voters, salary, $2,600. Police Department 360, there was a few adjustments in there. And 101, 5101, 54,000 for the officer. 10,000 for overtime, and then down in contracted services, $5,000. In account 380, walk and rec.
So that's 69.
Contracted services, 9500.
Yes, 69,000 total.
360, 69 in total.
Yes.
And then in utilities, in account 5321, $10,000. That should add up to 131,100.
And we took 9,600 in parks and rec, correct?
95,000.
We never put the 2,600 though back in wage contingency.
It hasn't been done yet.
We haven't.
It was taken out, but it hasn't come back. Because that's an account you gotta do tonight.
Yeah.
Right, so the real cut is like 129 and change, or 128 and change?
No, right now, it's 131,000, because if you don't put the 2,600 back.
Oh, so, that's an option.
When we do, then it will be.
If we do, I think there might be an argument that there's enough in the.
Good.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bob and/or Brad? All right, let's jump into the rest of the category three accounts, beginning with Department 240. Suggests that we use the same format we've been using all these nights, where I'll make a motion for discussion purposes, hopefully it gets seconded, and we'll go from there. So to begin the discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept for Department 240 the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of $2,081,541. Discussion.
Sir Chairman?
Yes. Are we gonna do the hand raising again?
Yeah, hey, try to do it. So this is an account that I've always felt should be, you know, funded instead of bonded for road repairs. So to take out of it, I think it's just the wrong account to have taken a reduction on, and I'm just saying, if the Selectmen cut 100,000, is that what they did?
273. They took out 273 to bring it back down to today's level of 700,000.
700,000, okay. Well, I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, Bob Dibble, his comfort level is 800,000. I mean, that, to me, that's the only account that I would never think of cutting, just because of the way the roads are, the way the repairs go, that it should be funded rather than bonded. Just a comment. I'm not making a motion or anything, I just commentated for the moment.
I think the roads have gotten much better in the last five years. I think this would be the year that we back off the road, instead of doing something that would hurt kids or whatever. So I would keep this cut in place.
I think we've come a long way. I mean, in five years I've been on the board, we've increased this account almost, what, 400,000?
Definitely.
Is it close to that, 400,000?
Probably more, I think.
Maybe 500.
At least probably down around two and a half.
So, I mean, I think like for police department and other things, it's a work in progress, and you know, there were a lot of requests this year, and we, you know, we spent 30 hours cutting 131,000.
We could've worked for that.
Yeah, I mean, to put 100,000 back in kinda.
I'm not saying to put 100,000 back in, I just think no more cutting.
I agree. I agree with that.
Any more discussion?
I would just commend Bob Dibble for doing a great job with less than he asks for every year.
Can I just ask Brad?
I don't know, is he here?
How much have we spent year-to-date on salt?
Can you watch the video?
What's the room you live in?
The salt and sand.
Salt, we spent $40,000 year-to-date, and sand, 27,000.
And what did we do last year?
Uh, sand last year, 68,000. Uh, salt, 67,000.
So I, I'm gonna make a motion that might not be popular, but I'm gonna make a motion that we cut 2,500 from both the 209 sand, and then another 2,500 from line 210 for a total adjustment of 5,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we, I guess we have to probably do that in two motions. So we have a motion on the table, excuse me, a motion on the floor to reduce Department 240 account 209 by 2,500?
Yeah, that was seconded by some, oh, you have to resecond it.
Resecond.
Any discussion?
Is this the global warming cut?
Call it whatever you want, and just, you know.
It was a pretty easy year.
Well, last year too, we spent 60,000. Last year was an average winter, I would say. I think 2,500's not gonna be detrimental to. Plus, when you look at most towns, now, most towns are actually trying to find ways to reduce their salt impact upon the environment. So it's something that they're probably gonna be looking to cut back in.
I wonder if they have any left from this year.
Sure.
Anyone know that?
I thought, I thought he made a statement that he was pretty well stored up now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have had a very wild winter.
2,500.
Any more, any more discussion? Yeah, 209.
First is sand, 209. Four on 209, right?
Yes, 209. All those in favor of the motion to reduce Department 240 line item by two, excuse me, line item 209 by 2,500, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done, next motion?
I make a motion to reduce line 210 salt by 2,500.
I would second that.
Discussion. Not hearing any, vote on the motion. To reduce Department 240 line item 210 by 2,500, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we have to just do the math. Brad, keep me honest here, 076. All right, so for the total, Department 240, the revised amount, 2,076,541. Am I right, Matt, Brad?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Does that need a second?
I suppose.
Second? Did anyone second that?
I'll second, I think.
Wendy? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Done with 240. Moving on to account 390, employee benefits. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the amount in the employee benefits account, excuse me, Department 390, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, in the amount of 6,310,864.
Second.
Discussion.
Bob, I guess the cuts we've made in terms of salary and everything wouldn't have that big of an impact on FICA, where we could change any of those numbers, correct?
I mean, if you wanna, the effect on the officer is 4,100, it's 4,131. If you wanna reduce the account. The count is real close right now, so you got fluctuations in there. Personally, I wouldn't do it, but if you wanna take the 4,100.
Would 2,500 be a safer?
It's, it's a close account. That number's pretty much on the money. You know, and then when you look at the police overtime, last year was, you know, in a deficit compared to the negotiated salaries, not by a lot, by about 5,000. Well, you gotta pay for the FICA on that as well. So, I mean, if you wanna do 2,500, it's probably fine.
I make a motion to cut line 112 FICA by, we'll vote 2,000, because we're saying it's a real close account.
I would second that.
Discussion. Okay, not hearing any discussion, we'll vote on the motion to reduce Department 390 line item 112 by, I'm sorry.
2,000.
2,000.
2,000.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gotta do the math. I'm sorry, any other changes in that account? All right, just doing the simple math, make a motion that we amend the total amount in Department 390 to 6,308,864.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done, okay. We want to, Department, oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Okay, Department 420, miscellaneous charges and transfers. I'll make a motion for discussion purposes that we accept, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the total amount in Department 420 for 1,77,878.
Second.
Discussion.
This is the account that we would consider putting the 2,600?
No, that, that would've gone into.
Wage adjustment, 420.
Yeah, it's in, should be in 420, 353.
Yeah.
Yep, you're good, yep.
So then I would make a motion to adjust, or to increase, count 420, 353 wage adjustments by 2,600, which represents the reduction we made to the 330 account of registrar voters.
I'll second that for discussion.
Bob, did you think there was enough money without putting it back?
You know, we're in negotiation on two open contracts right now, and then we have a new one coming up. I can't say what's in the account as far as percentages, but certainly 2,600, I don't think, if you're looking to save 2,600, I don't think it's gonna make a difference on that account.
I mean, I'd be happy to withdraw. I have no issues with that, I just wanted to be fair to what we did to the registrars.
Yep.
I'd give to just withdrawing the motion and moving on. Okay. Anything else in that account? No?
No.
Okay, then we'll make a motion, actually, we have a motion on the table, on the floor, for accepting. I will restate, all those in favor of accepting the Board of Selectmen recommendation for Department 420 at the level of 1,77,878, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Okay. That brings us to Departments 450 and 460. Following, again, just the standard process, I'll make a motion for purposes of discussion that we accept in account 450, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, a bottom-line budget number of 48,342,994.
I'll second.
Discussion.
There was a handout made earlier of the budget update sheet, and Terry, would you be a good person just to give us a brief run-through on this?
Certainly, so this, of course, it's changed with the Board of Selectmen. But this originally takes you from the superintendent's proposed budget to the Board of Education approved budget. So when we made those changes, the Board of Ed asked to add four positions that they felt were very important to moving the district forward. At the same time, because during the budget process, we had told you that we put a placeholder in for health, and if we had any adjustments, we would take them. So we did line item, an adjustment downward in health insurance. That's why the full, adding the four positions, was the four positions minus the health insurance adjustment.
Which got us to the 4.6%.
Which got us to the, yeah.
Okay, what's the 10,000?
The 10,000 was, we look at contingency, we have a contingency where we have made the number of retirements, and we just.
Contact negotiations.
Yeah, we tightened, it's a whole bunch of things, but we tightened that up a little bit too. We felt we could take that down to 10,000, so we put that forward also. Because as we, as you say, this is a process, and so as we tighten up some numbers, we show. So just to be forthcoming, if you start with being back at the superintendent's proposed amendment, if we were to, if you were to leave it there, most likely what we would do is, we do have the reduction in health. We would take the reduction in health, and we would probably decide, or the Board of Ed would decide, which of those positions are most important, and add back just what covered.
What the reduction in health was.
What the reduction of health was. It would be the next steps we would take if you left it at the superintendent's proposed minus the 12,000 that.
When the Selectmen were discussing it, they didn't ask us at the time, and they just went back to the number.
To the original number.
To the superintendent's proposed budget.
Is that what the cut, their cut, is that your new number now? That's your original number?
We're back to the superintendent's original proposed budget, less 12,000.
Right.
They also made a change of an even 12,000.
So no one, no one asked us at that time.
Right.
They went to that, that number.
With an additional 153 of savings.
Correct.
By these two accounts, so.
Correct.
If you look to what's gonna be put into education services, it's about 141,187 more than what the superintendent initially proposed.
Well, we always go back and look at our line items, and so to be upfront, in the past, in prior years, we've always made the Board of Finance aware when we do have a reduction in health, as those numbers become more clarified by our benefit consultant. In this case, if you were to leave that amount, as I said, the Board of Ed would discuss, okay, there are new positions proposed, which would be the most important, and which would not fit. And of course, it would only be able to add to the reduction in health, okay?
So, just so I'm clear, let's say we took the 143, 187 out.
Right.
That would still leave, I know it's at the board's discretion, but just on my mind, it would still leave the, it could still leave the custodian, the original two teachers, and the administrator that you requested in your original budget to the board.
Absolutely.
So you could do that, if we cut to 143,000, what would be cut out would be?
Would be the Board of Ed.
The Board of Ed's, again, no value judgment, addition of three math interventionists.
And social.
And a train, the trainer, or whatever you call them.
Yeah, the, the social, emotional, the coach, yes.
Custodian. Excuse me?
Custodian?
Oh, the custodian was in her original.
Custodians in my original budget.
That was in her original.
And assistant principal, wasn't it?
Yes.
That was in the original budget.
Yes.
And their benefits are all in your budget, all in your number?
They're all in my number.
Well, to be straight, to be straight, no, and then a flat 10% placeholder was in there. I didn't specifically add the benefits needed for each of the positions.
That I.
That, that Dr. Carver had in there. I knew there would be a little wiggle room, I knew it would be coming down, and I knew I'd get a much closer analysis from the benefit consultant. So to take it down doesn't, would not, if you took it down the full amount, it would not leave me the full amount of the additional benefits. But to be 100% transparent, since going from 10 to 8, we have, we have found that we can go down one more percent. That one more percent would then, in turn, it's not on this list, it was more recent information that we received, that one more percent would cover.
The rest of the benefits.
The rest of the benefits for those additional positions.
Right, right.
So at this point, the 143, 187 is truly, when you look at the details of the benefits consultant's budget projection, the 143 is in addition to what I absolutely need, which is in the superintendent's proposed budget. For everything she asked for, including the positions. Fair?
Understand it.
Okay.
I'm kinda slow tonight, I think. I just wanna, if I propose to cut of 142,000 from the Board of Ed's budget, that would provide you the ability to put everything in that the superintendent requested in her original budget.
Right. What it wouldn't do is make the needs of some of the other things.
I understand.
That, that are better, but you're, correct, you are accurate.
And then the Board of Ed would have the option to decide whether they decided a math interventionist was what.
Correct.
But it would bring us back to your original proposed budget.
It would bring you back to Dr. Carver's original budget, with the health insurance adjustments also covering the positions that were included in Dr. Carver's original.
Minus the 12,000.
Minus the 12,000.
Right.
We would be 12,000 behind, so we would, but we would find the 12,000.
So 131, reduction of 131 would actually get you to your.
Correct, get her, yeah, because they went, the Board of Selectmen went to her number minus this 12,000.
When we were discussing a similar situation in the police department, we brought, we brought their budget back to the chief's recommendation, and then we cut it a little bit, right? If we were to take that approach here, we'd be deeper than the 1, I'll call it the 141, that's my number of the 153, 187, so the insurance and the reserves, less than 12,000.
What would the percent increase be, Brad, on that, if that were reduced by 141?
And you're saying overall?
Yeah. Overall.
It's gotta be 3. something.
The Board of Ed would be at 3.85.
Yeah, okay, we'd be over 4.
What about overall, Brad?
Overall, we would be at 3.216.
I didn't hear you, what did you say?
3.216.
So I move that we reduce Board of Education account by 143, 187.
I'll second that for discussion. And give it a 143?
187.
So adjust the insurance. Right? Any discussion? Further discussion?
I must be missing something, because.
3.44.
Total number.
48,199,807.
How, how could the total combined town can be at 3.2? When we said to bring it to 3, we would have to cut almost 770,000. Somewhere the number doesn't, I think we have a mistake in what the overall budget would be.
Is that because our balance?
So just, just set the ends of the spectrum, what the Board of Selectmen presented.
We had put both of them together already, and if we wanted to get the budget 3%, not saying that's where we're going, it would require almost 748,000 in cuts. If we cut to 140, we're still under 300,000 in cuts, right?
Again, to set the, set the anchors that we were talking about, right? The Board of Selectmen's presentation, a 3.9, or offering proposal, a 3.96% increase in spending, to get down to, and overall dollar-wise, 3,87,550. The other end of the spectrum, the other anchor, 3%, which we were trying to target before revenue, that increase in spending needs to be 2,339,746, thereabouts.
So cutting the 143, 187 would make the overall budget up 3.598. There was a, we run what-if scenarios, and what-if scenario was in there, so about 3.5.
Would we still be at the 3.?
Yours would change.
Our would still, would be the 3.85 that you have there.
Yeah, 8.44.
So, and Brad, that's, if I have all of my numbers right, 281,437,000 dollars of.
Uh, we're off 200, I have 281, 287.
I may be missing, we came into today at 131,300, I'm sure your numbers are right.
No, we came in today at 131,100.
100, there's our 200, okay, got it. Let folks think about that.
About what? The motion?
No.
The, the motion is one forty-three, one eighty-seven.
Right.
Well, that'll get us back to where it started, to the superintendent's proposal, you know, it'll get us somewhere. Honestly, this is the hardest department, obviously, because it's all, they're wrapped up in a lot of, you know, emotional stuff and I, I personally, I just hate talking about it because there's just, but what I see over the years is that the town, you know, what happens is because we're so hesitant to, um, you know, to, to upset the, the Feng Shui of the education department, that the town is what winds up getting, you know, reduced. And, and it's just, it's a struggle, so, I mean, honestly, I would wanna see a little more reduced on the Ed, Board of Ed side, but I'm not making a motion, I'm just saying that philosophically, it's difficult because year after year, the town is what we go back to and we start cutting. So it's just, you know, there's some inequality there that, you know, there should, there's, I can understand some inequality, but, you know, it just seems to be kind of extreme.
Brian?
I, I kinda look at the past few budgets being close to four percent, right? I mean, really, in recent history, our town budgets have been averaging four percent. If we look at the rules of the seventy-twos, our total town budget, if we don't take on any more debt and kinda maintain the course, we're gonna double our budget because the last two four percents in sixteen years, you're gonna be talking about a budget of a hundred and sixty million. I mean, that's a fact. So I don't really wanna put a value judgment on this year, I understand enrollment's up, I get it, okay? But at some point, this board is gonna have to make a decision and what can the town afford, so I think collectively, you know, we're really gonna have to start tightening the belts, 'cause I do know doubling the budget in the next sixteen years is not a sustainable course. And that's, that's math, I mean, that's not me, that's with a simple four percent, I mean, some years we've done over four percent. So I understand the state mandates and I do believe in your need, I do believe in a lot of it, but my job is also the balance, the fiduciary responsibility that a town, what the town can afford. So I'm comfortable with the cut that we've proposed tonight, but I think going forward, we really need to look at the numbers and the impacts, especially having two years, three years close to four percent.
And to be clear, Brian, when Brian says the board, he's talking about us, right? I know last year I made a similar comment and it got interpreted incorrectly, so he's, you all do what you're supposed to do, which is to be fierce advocates for the school system, we have to just kinda figure out where the economics fall, especially within the macro situation that we're finding ourselves in. And that's, there's so much uncertainty in the macro economy right now, our job is almost as difficult as yours, not quite, but it's very difficult, so we're trying to.
Revenue's gonna decline, eventually, we're not gonna have the revenue we have right now, the grant list is not gonna keep throwing in nine hundred thousand, a million dollars a year, it's just not a sustainable course. You know, we will have some revenue, but, you know, those people who, all of us remember two thousand seven, two thousand eight and, you know, what can happen like that, so, again, I'm not, I understand the Board of Ed's position and, believe me, with a student, with having a son who struggles in math and some other things, I understand the need, you know, and I believe in the need and I think you guys do a fantastic job. That's why it's so difficult when we make these cuts to your budget, but it is a well thought out, it's not to cut just to cut, it's not to cut to get to a number, 'cause if we got to the number where I would like to be, the town budget, the combined budget would be under three percent, I know that's not possible this year, but it's a goal that we really, as a board, I think, need to strive for in the future.
Nick?
You know, I would support this cut, but talking about this board, not the Board of Ed, we're so willing to add police officers, I would much rather spend the money on the kids, you know, they are our future, so, you know, we're in bad shape out there and if we're not gonna spend it on the kids, I'd much rather spend the money on the kids.
I agree with that, actually.
If I had a choice, I know the town has a certain ability to pay and, you know, everybody in town has to stay in town and is important to me, you know, I was on the police commission for a long time and I had old ladies saying, I have a choice, to pay for my heart medicine or pay for my lunch, and we had to think of everybody. I can go out and tighten my boots harder and make more money and pay an increase, but there's some people just don't have the ability to do that, and that's what we have to look at, but I would support this budget, I mean, this cut to get to the superintendent's, but we have to think of everybody in town and, and I think we forget that sometimes.
That's what I mean about the town side being cut, like last year we cut
Definitely.
Social services and the senior center and parks rec and we made a lot of cuts there.
Well, we get support for the Board of Ed, which is important.
Absolutely.
And they come out and they vote on it and they pass it and the split budget might have backfired a little bit because they all go back to their soccer games and then the town is where it takes the head, you know what I mean, because there's no one voting, except the people that can't afford it, you know what I mean? So I've seen that, I, I lived here a couple of years and it, it's unfortunate, but the, the whole town is important, not just parts of the town.
Any more discussion? All right, so then we have a motion on the ta- on the floor, it's been seconded, put it up for vote. Motion is at, for Department four fifty. I have to do quick math. Maybe not so quick. Okay, so the total amount, Brad, check me, forty-eight million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
Correct.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there a few seconded?
Um, actually, Bob did.
Did we do the motion to?
Robert? Did we didn't do the motion to reduce the?
Oh, yeah, that's what happened. We've gotta, we've gotta vote. Something didn't happen there. We have to vote on Robert's motion.
Right, on the one forty-three, one eighty-seven.
I thought that's what we just did.
You did the total.
No, you did the total.
Yeah, but the total comes out of, the one forty-three comes out of.
It's clearly six y.
It's different, there's no line item.
Oh, okay.
Can you say that amount again, please, Bob, if you don't mind?
Sure, forty-eight million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars.
Thank you.
Sure. Last account, four sixty, building maintenance, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the board of selectmen's recommendation of funding that account at five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is an account, I'm sorry, that Bevlar has a big history of not taking care of what we buy, okay? We don't maintain things like we should, we react more, and that's a problem, you know, when we have a flat tire or the oil needs to be changed, we should be doing on our vehicles, and I understand that this is probably gonna be a cut, but it, Bevlar has a great history of not taking care of what we pay for, and, and I have a problem with that.
Well, we got some serious new stuff that has to be maintained between the schools and the police station that, um, you know, it's gonna require.
I mean, again, over the past five years, I can only speak from my, you know, we've kinda kept this account pretty much status quo, right, Bob, I mean, we're always.
Or lowered it.
We're, we're, I know, but we're always between, we're always between four fifty, five fifty, and we're always there, I mean, that's, that's always the number, my only question was with the two new schools being renovated, we do get a year warranty on the build, correct?
We're still have to pay the normal service maintenance.
And all those contracts have gone off.
I understand.
There you go, but if you pick up contracts for the track house as well.
Bob, you have, you have additional generators we've added.
Right.
Additional elevator, um, elevator.
And HVAC equipment.
And HVAC equipment.
Spray guns.
And I, I'm gonna tell you, we're not cutting it at four fifty.
We're not.
We're not cutting it at four fifty.
Could I ask, um, Bob, um.
Four four at five hundred, right?
No, last year you took us down to four fifty.
So, so give us a sense of what's suffered.
I was just gonna ask Bob a question, is there any way to find out what the actual annual, um, amount is for contracts, is there any way to even get that number?
You have it. You have it.
Okay. So it's all, those are all the contracts, maintenance and, okay.
Yep, you have it all, targeted.
I didn't know if that was a complete.
Yeah.
It's there. I have a B.
Bob, what was the request for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty for that account? Do you have it?
Last year?
Of course, and it was, it wound up being four, four fifty.
And it went to four fifty.
For the longest time, it was five hundred thousand and eight.
It was five hundred, it was five hundred for many years.
Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Just, um, Terry, or maybe Bob, can you give us a sense at four fifty, what are the things that have suffered this year that didn't get done?
Well, this year, what, what we're spending that four fifty on is, we pretty much have not done any of the, any, you know, the school, in the school projects that we list, we really haven't done many of them at all. There's a lot of that money in the, in that account has had to cover things that have come up during construction.
Right.
And, and, you know, all of a sudden, all of a sudden, we can't hold something at the school.
Right.
So we have some additional costs, or there, there's just been thing and thing and thing with the, with, with Rockwell and Johnson that Bob's had to take care of, we have, to have an extra electrician come in and do something, we, we've just had a lot of extra things come up that technically are not under the project budget, so we've picked them up, because they have to get done, because we have to move things forward. So I'm gonna tell you, I still have moldy ceiling tiles in the middle school.
Right.
I mean, just never getting to some of these things.
Just on the drop off list.
I mean.
These are nothing, normal town, these are the.
You've got, when you look up, you see, the ducts need to be cleaned, we've had the ducts on the, on the agenda for how many years?
Five years.
Right. They need to be cleaned, and they just don't get done because other things take over because that counts under the budget.
And we've managed at the five hundred, the four fifty is just, it's just not enough.
Sit here.
I know during the presentation, I had made, um, I had asked a question about the two projects and that one was over budget and you, and Dr. Carver had said you were in communications with the state on how that was gonna be handled?
Yep.
Did you know, do you have any information on that?
It hasn't changed, so what the process is, is that eventually, when the project gets to a certain percentage completion, they file another, um, uh, application with the state, it's an EDN oh forty-nine R, I believe, it's revised.
We could file it once.
We can only file it once, they wanna wait until they know all of, anything that has to be done is done and it's accounted for.
Hold on, so you mean you filed that in case it goes over, that's your one chance to.
Right.
Yeah, you're waiting for the, right, what's it gonna be?
Right, right, right.
Before I file it.
Right, so we haven't done that yet, um, we'll likely do it, I think, towards May-ish, um, as we get closer to the final phase.
Any idea what that figure is?
No, because we don't know the total of the project is actually gonna spend, because I think I shared with you also that there's, there's contingency, both projects do, so once we know that we're not gonna be expending the contingency, then that, that's gonna adjust the overall thing or the, that we're asking the state for reimbursement on. So once we know all of that information, then we do that final filing.
One was over budget and one was under, but it's still two different projects, is that?
So there, it's two different ways, so for the town, it's one project, right?
One, one sum of money.
So for the town, it's one project, the state uses it as two separate projects and you actually file a separate, and that's why you have to file the R, so they'll see when we file, because there'll be a reduction on the Johnson side and then there'll be an overage on the Rockwell side, we just don't know how far that overage will be because we don't, because there's still plenty of contingency there. So it, it could be, if you just look at the math right now, it's, it's a lot over, but there's also seven hundred thousand dollars, something like that, no quote, exact, but there's about seven hundred thousand that's still in contingency, so we won't know and we can't file for that until we get to that point.
I would like to just table this discussion, because it's, it's really not relevant to us yet, actually never.
Well, not, yeah, but it is, it'll be, and I just was, you know, just trying to get an idea.
Brian?
So I'll give you an example of something that happened just in the last ten.
This is about the four sixty.
The four sixty. So, and this is, it's a positive, but I'm just gonna tell you the result, okay? So, so as part of Kerma, we brought in, they suggested we bring in Hartford steam boiler at no charge to review a lot of our systems, but when they come in and, and they finish their review, they come up with some recommendations. So they now have come up with some recommendations and some of those recommendations, they say, are critical, and then they also drive this report back to our town insurance company. So, um, so they found that we have, um, we have some electrical panels, we have one that needs to be swapped out.
Do you believe?
Yep, and they called it critical, right.
What, what they found is that one of the panels were left over from the twenty-ten renovation that was never changed.
This is the high school, I'm sorry?
High school, yeah.
They found out that this panel has lost its certification by UL and it ha- and there's a class action suit right now, I'll, and I just handed Dr. Carver the report, and they, our insurance company recommends that this be replaced immediately, it's, they, they classify it in a critical stage, and critical means that if, that, that panel fails, it's a, it's a high impact to the operation of the building.
So that means?
Oh, no, I know what it means.
This is something that pops up and, I mean.
And they told the insurance company, so now it's out.
Right, 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 right.
But that's.
It happens all the time.
It just came up.
So things like this happen, we take it from the four sixty, we get it done, I mean, we do the right thing, I mean, we work hand in hand with, with the town involving insurance, we're, you know, I think we always are good partners, so, so I do need some adequate funding in my four sixty count, so that, as, as, as things come up, you know.
You know, we, we're dealing with challenging economic times.
Yes.
That said, I, I think we don't wanna create tomorrow's problem today.
Right.
And it, I don't wanna cut the discussion off, but I, I'm thinking out loud that maybe move the question to just accept it unless people have more, we don't wanna talk about it. And, um, again, leave it, the motion on the table is at the board of selectmen's recommended.
Or five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five oh two seven, twelve.
No, they took it to five hundred.
Oh.
Excuse me. Again, I don't wanna prematurely cut off discussion, I think we're all in heated agreement on this one. Okay? All right, um, all right, so again, motion on the table, it's been seconded to accept the board of selectmen's recommended funding of the four sixty department at five hundred thousand, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are all of our accounts, I guess we have to do category summaries for purposes of putting something in front of the town for the public hearing.
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, right, right, right now, we're at, right now, we're at a three point six increase, correct?
Yeah, three point five.
If, this for my own, if we wanted to get that number to three point five, how much more would we have to cut?
Seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Say how much again?
Seventy-six thousand, seventy-six thousand, five sixty.
Someone's left two minutes.
That's what this gets, not to five percent.
Can I, I would like to know if it's possible, if we can readdress the library, the four thirty-five account, I feel that the cut that we made was substantial to their operations and does not provide. to their operations and does not provide them any wiggle room whatsoever. Would be a true reduction of services according to what Megan would say. You know, if they fund the half to items, the contracted services, the salaries and things like that, it does not leave them anything. Anything. I'm not saying put the whole fifteen thousand back, but at least if we could give them five.
Wendy, I would support that if we hired the officer that we're adding in January. And then that would take care of that.
Wendy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Brian, place first.
Last night I went through the accounts again and, you know, Nick had made a motion to cut five thousand from the supplies of Parks and Rec. There was kind of a heated discussion going on something else at the time. And Brad had mentioned that they still had a sixty-eight thousand dollar revenue, even though they overspent in that line. So I was gonna make a motion tonight just to reopen that account and bring his motion back of cutting five thousand. It would be a wash to where we are if we wanted to put the five thousand back into the library, reopen that account and take the five thousand out. And we're still, in theory, increasing their account by five thousand, which means that revenue, in theory, should still go up. 'Cause we're operating, you know, at a surplus, correct, Bob?
You talking about the library with additional revenue of five thousand?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about Parks and Rec. We, we had talked about-
Oh, okay, yeah.
I, I had talked about like the fertilizer account and all that. We cut the five thousand, but then something happened that like blew the whole conversation up and Brad and I were still talking and then it just kinda got lost in the shuffle. My point is, is we're still increasing that line by five thousand and they had a sixty-eight thousand dollar surplus in terms of revenue. In theory, the revenue should still go up. Even with the five thousand dollar cut is what I'm trying to say. And we could put the money back and it's, it doesn't take us back from the cuts we've made.
Just think we were a little severe to the library, sorry.
I mean, when you look at the revenue side for next year-
He's still answering the question.
I mean, we, we did have it last year, it was a good year, but what happens if this virus kicks in and kids don't go to the programs? Then you're not gonna get the revenue you were expecting and you may not have the extra sixty-eight thousand.
But in theory, you're not gonna be spending the money on striping fields and things like that. If people aren't gonna participate in group sports, your expenses are gonna go down. You're not gonna have the facilities rented, you're not gonna have any of that if the virus takes that big a toll. So, so I would, I personally think it wa, it was a very safe cut. And like I said, if it accomplishes helping the library out and it's not a detriment, I mean, it, it's really a wash, in my opinion. So that, I would support you putting five thousand back into the library. If we took, if, if, if we pulled it from that line, you'd have my full support.
Cynthia?
What I wanted to do is ask Wendy, I mean, I support that, what you're saying about the five thousand. I was wondering if you had any ideas where we could take that out.
I understand that there's five thousand dollars in the Park and Rec department. Sorry.
Hey, I just wanted to-
I love the-
Quickly, is that like-
Okay, now we're, we're talking.
Dee.
So, but I, so as I understood that account though, Brian, and I remember that conversation specifically, that is things like paint, um, cleaning supplies, like it's all the stuff that they use to maintain like the bathrooms at Parloa and, and that kind of stuff. So I'm not sure how revenue from the programs affects them being able to do those things.
They charge a fee, like if you wanna use a ball, a ball field and they have to stripe the field if you have a tournament, they're charging a fee. We're still increasing that account by over five thousand. It's not like, it's not like we're taking money totally away from it. We're still increasing the account by five thousand. I'm just saying, reduce the amount, we're increasing it to bring it down to that level, which it's still an increase. I should pull it up right here.
But do you want them to charge more than, so that they can make up that five thousand?
They're, they're actually, they're gonna have, in theory, they're gonna have more in revenue. So at a hundred and thirteen thousand, they had sixty-seven thousand dollars surplus with the revenue. So you're still adding five thousand, so if all things were the same, their revenue should go up to seventy-two thousand.
But for example, the schools don't pay to use the fields.
It doesn't matter. I mean, we had it funded at a hundred thirteen thousand is, is where we had it. They spent whatever they spent. They still had sixty-seven thousand in revenue is what I'm trying to say. By increasing that account by five thousand, in theory, if everything stays the same, you're at seventy-two thousand in revenue for this year.
Bob, is that?
And we, and we've increased the program.
They don't worry to use the revenue, like the revenue goes back into the general fund, so.
It doesn't, no, the, 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 the revenue is actually part of, you know, their calculation on the mill rate and everything like that. It's just-
We have revenue on, on, from different sources. Each department that's supplying revenue, just, it doesn't go to just the general fund. It reduces the amount that we gotta collect from the tax bases.
It goes to the overall, it reduce, like he said, it reduces the amount. So what I'm saying is, is-
It goes-
I don't wanna say you're overtaxing people, but if you could cut it by five thousand and you're still increasing revenue and it serves a purpose for the library, to me, it makes perfect sense.
I would like to move the question, because I do-
We don't have a question.
Oh, I thought, I thought Wendy put a motion.
No, I did not put a motion, but I would like to.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, before, just one- The five thousand dollars is gonna get lost in the rounding and this is, again, the, this is the preliminary round.
Well, it is.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I know we're gonna get in, we've got a list of things that we're gonna kind of come back to after the public hearing. Do we just put this on that list and deal with it then?
I, I don't think it-
Once Wendy makes a motion.
Yeah, fair enough.
I, I, uh, think that it's, it's critical for the library. I don't want it to get lost and Megan's been here, I think she stays every night here. She's been here for like three nights looking anxious, so I, I would just take care of it now, because it's steady.
Then let's just do the library now and we'll put the three eighty, fifty-two oh six on our list.
Well-
Can we promise?
Well, no. I've promised a lot of things in my life.
Okay, fair enough. Let's do, let's do two. Uh, so Wendy, make a motion, please.
I would like to make a motion to increase account four three five library by five thousand dollars.
I'm gonna second that motion.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those- Yes, Officer Officio.
Um, I'm, I'm speaking for myself and I was speaking for the Board of Selectmen. But I think when the Board of Selectmen reviewed this account, you did not realize that the line item for the fifteen thousand dollar reduction was going to C N R, but it wasn't going to C N, C N R. It was the actual cut.
Yeah.
So I think the Board of Selection, Board of Selectmen had made a mistake in reducing that account by the fifteen thousand. And I'm happy to see that you've taken some action to resolve it.
Paul, are you agreeing with that analysis?
Yes.
Yes, we, then we talked about it for a long time last night.
Let's not talk about it anymore.
We're not talking about it anymore.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All those in favor of increasing Department four thirty-five?
Library.
No, I know, library, I should just put in the bottom line again for accounting purposes.
Bottom line, count.
So, you know, everybody in here.
Yeah, you just need to say library, just like the Board of Ed. We don't need to do a line item.
No, we have accounts here.
We have an account there only because we need to put an account in for the system.
Library. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bob, I'd like to make a motion, we reopen Park and Rec.
Second.
Uh, account, uh, fifty-two zero six?
Three eight, uh, yeah, well, three eighty-two oh six. You wanna vote on our motion before we start?
And Nick, I'm sorry, just, which account?
Three eighty-two oh six. It's the maintenance and supply.
Maintenance and supply, yeah.
Okay, do we have a, someone said?
Let's vote on opening it.
Oh, we have to vote on opening it?
Well, we have a motion and a second.
We can just make a motion to cut it five thousand if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll make a motion that we cut five thousand out of the maintenance supplies of three eighty-two oh six.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Not here.
I'm good on discussion.
I'm good on discussion.
I'm sorry, Cynthia, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Any discussion, Cynthia?
No.
All right, all those in favor of the emotion, which is to reduce Department three eighty, line item two zero six by five thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now we gotta do the math.
I'm sorry, I'm an A. You're an A.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Now we have to do the math. I'm going to go off of the adjusted number we had from last night and the new adjusted number will be one million, five hundred, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Is that right, Brad?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Unopposed? Okay. Yes, Wendy?
I have a strange, or maybe it's preliminary, too early question, I don't know. What is the, okay, we know now what our accounts, our budget will be. What is our anticipated revenue and when you factor the two together, where in the world are we? Sixty-four thousand dollars.
Well, can we, before we, before we do that-
We're gonna run the bottom line numbers, Rich?
Yeah, can we do the department numbers and then we'll go to revenue? Just to have the components of the calculation.
You're doing the whole, so the whole, all the departments, right?
Yeah, this, this page, like what's gonna be on the referendum?
Yeah.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
So top, total town operating budget first?
And then we'll do revenue right after, come up with a little estimate there.
Brian?
And I'm not trying to be difficult, but, but, but to Wendy's point, before I vote on the bottom line-
Fair enough.
I'd really like to know-
Where we are.
When we take revenue, where exactly are we?
Sure.
I, I think that'd be very helpful for me at my vote.
Let's think of what he's, what-
Brad, I know it's a tough number.
What Brad and Bob are doing now, it's just for information.
We're gonna get a ballpark.
This is preliminary, you know.
Are we still voting on that tonight or are we gonna think about it for the weekend and vote on Tuesday's meeting?
No, I think we're gonna vote tonight, just to- Again, we, we- I'm sorry?
Let's make your schedule ready. Yes, we need.
Bob, Brett, should we take a five minute recess? We've got a request for a recess.
Are you a little too close for this?
Five minutes.
For a five minute recess.
That'd be good.
You're just recessed for five minutes.
Okay.